Good evening, welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday morning, July 13th, 2017. Just one note before we begin the meeting, the board, the posted agenda had indicated an executive session for this evening that has, that will not be taking place. So we'll start out with the approval of minutes in your folders, you have minutes from the meeting of June 20th, 2017.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2017 as amended.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay. Reserve fund transfer, Bob?
Welcome back.
Thanks.
He told me he took the stairs on purpose as part of his physical therapy.
It's true. The more stairs I can get in, the better my knee will be. Yeah, I'm requesting $6,000 in a reserve fund transfer into my overtime account because of the large amount of overtime that we had in June.
And Bob, I think there's also, we can maybe just take these up together, although I understand they require two separate votes, you're also asking for an intra-department transfer.
That's right, an intra-department transfer of $58,500 to close out the salary account.
So again, for the benefit of the audience, the expense portion of the fire department budget was, is running a surplus.
Correct.
And so, as you saw in our last meeting a few weeks ago at the end of the year, oftentimes, we move dollars from payroll to expenses or vice versa in order for us to close the books in balance, and that again is what, is what this request is doing. The $6,000 is coming from the reserve fund which Town Meeting approved as part of Article 13 at this year's Town Meeting. Are there any questions from either of my colleagues?
None.
I'd just like to remind the audience again, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, you know, the fire department has three firefighters off on injury set.
Yeah, actually it's four right now on long-term injury or real mislead.
So it just makes it much more difficult to manage overtime and shift staffing with, you know, with four guys or four people out, right?
Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, and I, let me just look at the vote list, I think we, we need to do these separately. So Paul, could you maybe take the first one?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve a transfer from the reserve fund to the fire department overtime account.
And do we have to say the amount, or we just, that's it?
The amount is $6,000.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Karen?
I move that we approve an intra-department transfer from the fire department expense account to the fire department overtime account in the amount of $58,500.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bob, thank you, and I also just wanted to acknowledge and welcome the new Chair of the Advisory Committee, Lucy Hancock, who's in the audience.
Congratulations Lucy.
We've all had the privilege of working with Lucy, Karen and I, at the Advisory Committee table, and Paul and his responsibility, but we're just really looking forward to a great year, and we know you've got four members that you're going to be bringing on board, and we're looking forward to meeting and working with them as well, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Bob, thank you.
Thanks Bob.
Okay, next on the agenda is an Affordable Housing Trust update. Tim, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Tim White from the Affordable Housing Trust, and I have Anita Comerfit, our Treasurer from the Affordable Housing Trust, just to give you folks a brief update on what's going on at the Affordable Housing Trust. So, we'll talk about a couple of properties that we're looking at and working with to create some additional affordable housing in town. The first property is the Whiting Street property, which this, well, this Sluckman authorized the sale to the Affordable Housing Trust a couple of years ago, and the initial plan with Whiting Street was to create a single affordable housing unit there. We have now, it has now morphed into a three-house development up there, and we are expecting tonight a revised RFP from Attorney Coughlin, that upon its arrival, we hope to be voting on next week, and getting, moving forward with the three-house development. The second property I want to talk about is Rust House. Rust House is a property down on Main Street that is presently owned by the Congregational Church, and that it is under agreement to be sold to Father Bills. The Rust House is a property that houses seven, I believe it's seven, single women who are in need of housing, who qualify under the, probably 50% of the average median income in the area, and they live on the property, there is an off-site property manager, the Congregational Church had operated it for a number of years, they recently, in the last couple of years, turned it over to Father Bills for property management purposes, and they are now looking at selling the property to Father Bills. Father Bills approached the trust to see whether or not we might be willing to contribute to make sure that that property can maintain the affordable component that it has for the women, and the trust has voted to support that, and we are going to, we have agreed to contribute $100,000 to the purchase, with the possibility of another $50,000, subject to whether Father Bills can get the Rust House property as a inventory property for us. You may recall when Father Bills came into town with the Veterans House, that when it originally came in, there was not the opportunity to have that listed as a part of our inventory. I think the basic reason is because it didn't go through the normal DHCD channels requiring all the affirmative housing, that Father Bills has its own built-in clientele that have all clearly qualify regardless. I do understand that there have been changes with DHCD, and that the Veterans House now is part of our inventory property, and it clearly relates to the fact that it's veterans, so I'm not sure that that is going to apply here. We got some initial information from John Uwinski over at Father Bills, and he indicated that they'd be more than willing to see whether or not they can get the property qualified, they would work with DHCD, they actually reached out to them, and where I suspected that it wasn't possible under any circumstances because of the fact that there is a, they're only bringing their own clientele in there, they're not opening up statewide. He came back with at least the, some optimism that it's possible, they would be using something called the Coordinated Entry into the South Shore, it's a program they use with the federal government versus the state government. We debated whether we wanted to make it an absolute requirement, and in the end, we decided not to, that it still is serving the exact same purpose that the trust has, which is to create or maintain or preserve affordable housing. But we thought it might be worth presenting it to the Board of Selectmen to see what their thoughts might be in respect to whether or not we want to go down that road. Mr. Uwinski did indicate that it would not be an easy task, but he was willing to do it if the town was so inclined to ask him to do. You know, from an affordable housing perspective, you know, I've seen this before, that you get properties that are clearly affordable housing, but because they don't fit within the parameters of what DHCD has, they don't qualify for your inventory. Fortunately, in the town of Hingham, and I think to the town of Hingham's credit, the need to have seven more units of affordable housing is not required in order to deal with the Chapter 40B, but we still thought it was worth bringing it to your attention and see, get any feedback from you. So, I do have a little printout on the Coordinated Entry in the South Shore, I didn't bring a number of copies, I, but I will make sure I get them to you folks and get them in your boxes for you.
And Tim, just in terms of, in terms of that process, you said that it's kind of difficult, do we, do you have a sense of what it entails and cost? How long it might take, and, yeah, cost?
The sense I was, we're not kind of difficult, it'd be very difficult.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was what John said, and from a cost perspective, it wouldn't be costly to us, because we're not stepping up to pay for anything at this stage. The best I can tell you is that, from my experience, is you go to DHCD, and unless you are going to advertise that property in the state list with the affirmative housing requirements and comply right down the road, then you are not going to qualify as an inventory There seems to be a possible window that the state is now starting to look and say, well, wait a minute now, if the federal government is willing to look at it as a legitimate affordable housing unit, then perhaps we might allow you to make it a state inventory property if you comply with the federal requirements. Father Bills has done that, not obviously here in Hingham, but in other places in the state, so they know it can be done, and it's only an initial conversation they've had with DHCD, there's no guarantee that they'll end up approving it anyways. But it's going to be a problem that whether it's Hingham, or Hull, or Cohasset, communities run into it all the time, and I just think it's unfortunate that there's so much red tape, that a lot of worthy affordable housing units are not credited to the communities. So, so I just thought it was worth bringing it to your attention.
I appreciate that. When would you need a decision from the board as to whether, you know, we would want to try to pursue this?
I would say within the next month.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's some flexibility there.
Okay. How, what would be, how would you like to proceed on that? Would you like to give us some information, have us give you some feedback, put it, maybe put it on one of our agendas for an upcoming meeting?
Sure. I mean, I absolutely, I'll get this to you, and I'll ask John whether he has any additional information, this is what he gave to us, and told us that this was, this would be the route that it would go.
And would that require, for example, you know, legal resources on the town's part? You know, I-
The whole idea from the trust standpoint was that this would be something, the question was whether we would actually require Father Bills to do it.
Right.
And, as opposed to us paying for anything to do, or us participating in it, other than saying that we would like, we would support it, obviously. We're not planning on paying for anything.
And you've incentivized them, though, if they want additional resources from the trust, you've incentivized them to try to go down this path?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So I don't think, you know, I don't think we'd need to have council reviewing, there's not going to be a contract that obligates the trust or the town to do anything. This is basically, if you folks want to increase the funds that we're willing to provide, this is what we'd ask you to do.
And you know, on one hand, you know, right, I mean, again, right now, the town, and we'll talk about this later in the Town Administrator Report, while the town is at a safe harbor, and should the projects that are currently, you know, are in receipt of comprehensive permits, should those pull building permits, which is our expectation, will have achieved our affordable housing quota through 2030, but I think kind of in general, there would be an appetite that if we have affordable housing in this community, let's do what we can to make it count. And, you know, 2030, a new census will come along, you know, and-
Yeah, no, I-
And, you know, you never know what's going to happen in terms of the law, so I'd, in particular, if it doesn't require a lot of cost from the town or a lot of time, there's kind of part of me that says, what's, what's the harm in trying and pushing it? Especially if you've constructed the arrangement with Father Bills in a way where it's not a requirement, you know, I'd sort of think, maybe there isn't a lot of downside to trying. And, you know, I think we've all gotten, you know, a lot of letters and a lot of questions in the last year from people around affordable housing, and a message that, that I keep hearing in those letters are, "Town, we really want you to be proactive and be doing things where you can." And this is a place where administratively, we, you know, we can do something.
Tim, the Rust House itself, you mentioned that it's located on Main Street, but I know I hadn't heard about it until this came up, where exactly is it on?
I had never heard about it before, and I actually did a site visit, and I will tell you, the place is immaculate, the tenants were as warm as could be, of course, they thought I was coming in there with gold in my pocket to help them out, because they said, "Make sure you treat this guy right," but it was, the house is just fabulous, and it's, it's across the street from the movie theater, on, right next to the Rundown House.
Okay. I mean, you know what, it's-
I'll subscribe it.
I mean, to me, the existence of that house over the long haul speaks volumes about, I mean, I think this is a very generous town, I think that particular property speaks volumes about the generosity of the Congregational Church, I mean, they've maintained that property for years and years for the benefit of these, of women who are in need of housing, and they've done it, you know, under the radar, sort of true to their mission, and, you know, I'm excited about Father Bills' desire to come in and maintain, you know, that kind of housing for women right in the downtown, you know, walkable to the bus, walkable to, you know, services in the downtown area. I guess, a couple of questions I had, one was, is Father Bills merely the property manager there, or similar to the Veterans House, does Father Bills provide any sort of support to the tenants in that building?
They have, as it is right now, they're not, right now, Congregational Church still owns it, Father Bills is purchasing it, and that's what we're helping, helping them do. But their role won't change, other than being the owner, they're intending on making some improvements to the house, not that it needs a lot, if you take a drive-by, but they're going to make some improvements to the house, and they have an off-site property manager, who comes in and checks on the women periodically to make sure that they're, they're getting to their jobs, or they're doing whatever they're supposed to be doing, and staying sober, healthy, and productive.
So sort of very independent?
Very independent, yeah.
Living, okay.
Yeah, but, but still with at least an off-site, and it's been successful, that's the way they've been doing it, so they've got a history with it.
Okay. And will there be housing vouchers, like how's the, how does the rent get paid here?
That is, that's all through Father Bills, it's not Section 8.
Okay, that's what I-
It's their, they have their own system, but it's, I don't think it's dissimilar to what the HUD does, is they take a proportion-
Some calculation of their income.
Of their income, yeah.
Okay. And do you know whether there'll be any deed restriction on this house as affordable when it's transferred to Father Bills?
As condition of our subsidy, there will be a deed restriction.
A deed restriction, okay, thank you.
Okay. You know what, I might, I just had a thought with this Rust House, Karen, you're kind of the affordable housing liaison, and you are so intimately involved in Father Bills and the Veterans Home, but perhaps coming out of this, if, Tim, if you can pass along any information you have to us, maybe we'd ask you at a subsequent Board of Selectment meeting to kind of report back to us on, you know, this kind of getting it into the inventory, maybe with the recommendation, and we can take it up. You'd be welcome to come back in, but it might just kind of expedite things.
Yep.
And, you know, if, if you guys can kind of work it offline, and I think that also gives Ted and Tom a chance to, you know, talk about this and ask questions that they may have, and then, you know, we'll put it on an agenda for discussion and decision in time for, you know, for you.
Okay. I mean, because one of my other questions, we could talk about as well, is whether, you know, it makes any sense to bring our state delegation to bear on any of this with DHCD, you know, on the, on the sort of political side or legislative side. So, we'd be happy to sit down and strategize with you on this.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So, any other questions on Rust House?
Could you come up to the mic, please? Hi, Jim.
Just curious, Tim, about one thing, a lot of projects, I've been aware of, you know, there's affordability restriction in perpetuity, and that pretty much guarantees it, but is that not enough?
It's not enough, Jim. I mean, the fact is that these, the folks that live there are way below the qualifying amount, I mean, ridiculously below, and unless you still fit within, you comply with the other matters of red, I don't want to call them red tape, it's not fair to say that, the other procedures that DHCD requires, including opening it up to the statewide list, the affirmative housing marketing requirement before you bring a new person in there, you know, where Father Bills simply says, well, we have another person who has no housing and no money, and it's a single woman, we move her, although I will say, I should say this also, is that they don't just move anybody in there, they do, they do do a, their own due diligence to make sure that this is an individual who will be able to live independently.
And can manage the rent and so forth.
Yep, yep.
Now, I was just thinking, that so often seems to be the key piece in perpetuity.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Carol, question?
I just was wondering, just a reminder, like, where that hundred and possibly $150,000 would come from, is it the CPA money?
CPC money, yep.
CPC, I'm sorry, okay. And also, I'll say, while I'm here, I just was at the Rust House today, ironically, doing a story, and it's amazing, it's beautiful inside, it's like five residents, and they have been making homemade chocolate, oatmeal chocolate cookies, and it's just a wonderful feeling there, they love being there, it's a great place.
That's fantastic.
Thank you, I'm glad you joined the story. Yeah, and Carol mentioned, so the, every year with CPC money, we fund what's called the Opportunity Fund, and the purpose is to give the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust seed money for worthy affordable housing projects in town, including this.
And just to make clear, Loi, it absolutely is, obviously, we were thinking about whether we wanted to go into the inventory or not, but when all was said and done, the trust saw this as an opportunity to preserve affordable housing in our community, and I think to the trust's credit, you know, regardless of whether it's going to be the inventory or not, committed to funding, so.
Yes, we appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Okay, Nick, go ahead.
You wanted to update this, Tom?
Just a couple, a couple more quick things, and then, we, I just wanted to let the board know that we are meeting next week, and for the first time in some time, we are going to return the Selectmen's parcel to our agenda, and start to think about what we might want to be doing with that down the road, so we certainly would always welcome the input from this board.
I would just, and I met with the head of the Housing Authority about a week ago, I think one thing that, as we're looking at that Beale Street corridor, it's not lost on me that that corridor is undergoing, and will be undergoing, a lot of change in the next few years, not only with the Broadstone Bear Cove development, but the possible location for the North Fire Station, and as, as all of the various groups are working to advance different projects in that Beale Street corridor, I'd ask us all to kind of work together, and also think about how do we engage and have dialogue with the residents who will be most directly affected by that. I think that'll, that'll help us all as we pursue our individual efforts, but also make sure that we're coordinating where we can.
That's exactly why we came in and mentioned it tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Any, any initial thoughts that you have on that parcel, or?
The, you know, we've kind of gone through a variety of possible uses for the property. When Town Meeting first passed the article, it was for homeownership. We then looked at the possibility of rentals, and then we came close to settling on the idea of an assisted living facility there, which I will say struck a chord with everybody on the trust, so it's, even though we recognize that the cost, and we, I think we knew it upfront, based upon our, what we had, what we had learned, that the cost is obviously sufficient, significantly more to the town than it would be if we simply did one of the other things and had a developer come in, there is a need, and it is a use that probably would, assuredly would create less traffic. So I think that's, without, you know, any, had it, had no discussion since we pulled it off a year ago, that was part of our thinking.
Yeah, and to the extent that you're thinking about that, I would also encourage you to think about, you know, this next CPC funding cycle, I think, I just saw when I glanced briefly at the Journal, that the CPC funding cycle has opened up.
August.
And, yeah, and I think closes kind of in September, and I, I know we had some discussions last year with the Chair of the CPC, Carol Piles, about the idea that if, if the Affordable Housing Trust requested kind of more than the typical $100,000 in opportunity funding, that even if those funds weren't expended in two years, you know, would there, would there be a possibility of exception, knowing that your projects have a longer lead time?
Yeah.
And my, my recollection is that there was a real openness for CPC, so as you're, as you're thinking about all that, I'd, I'd again encourage you to pick up on some of that dialogue, because I think you're right, that, that use, that need of housing struck a chord for many of us, and I think there might be some financial resources that could be put to bear, that could, you know, make it, make it feasible somewhere within the town.
Great, great. Okay, so that is my report, I want to turn it over just for a real brief update on tax title properties to Anita, and Anita is the Treasurer, just to kind of go through what was in your packages as far as the history of funding, so we sort of have a little financial report, too.
Great.
Thank you. One of the things that the Affordable Housing Trust is now investigating is looking at properties that are owned by the town as a result of tax takings, and we've, we've gone through the inventory, we've narrowed it down to six properties that we think have some potential for us to take hold of and do a due diligence to see if we can build on them. We decided to start with the easiest one, which was 10 Cedar Street. So right now, we have an engineer that we have hired, who's going to be digging some test pits and seeing if we can turn that, what is currently a vacant lot, into a lot that we can either, in cooperation with an entity, build, build an affordable home there, or turn it over to somebody who can build an affordable home there. And if that goes well for us, then we've got five more on our list that we'll take one at a time. They're expensive undertakings, so we only want to bite off as much as we can chew. So we'll see how the first one goes, and we'll proceed from there. The package that you have, does everybody have a copy of that?
Yep.
So, the package that you have is a, is a three-page document that gives you history since the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust in 2007, right through to 2017, the monies that we have collected, or earned, or have been given to us through CPC. We've also provided on the last page, I'll skip to the last page and come back to the one in the middle, the last page is the amounts of monies that we currently have in our budget, and some of those monies are already allocated, so you'll see that we have in our account $58,000 plus, a little change, that we are earm- $58,000 plus, a little change, that we are earmarked to spend on a new elevator over at the Lincoln School Apartments. And we also have in our account $158,000 left of the $200,000 that was given to us through CPC for purposes of developing the Selectman's Parcel. So, we've spent down about 42, 41-ish thousand of that, and we have 158 left. And the balance of our account, what we have in our account, is in our Opportunity Funding. And so, although we currently have $6666, we still have an additional, you'll see the footnote at the bottom, there's $118,000 that has been allocated to us, which we do not have in our bank account yet. So, so really, that number, what we deal with is a little bit higher than the one on the paper. So, that middle page, just for, just for fun, we put together a list of the projects that, over the history of the Affordable Housing Trust, that we've worked on, and how much we've spent on them, and if they've been able to produce a revenue for us. And the one that I think we're really proud of is that first one, the Beale Cove, where we purchased the, the unit through foreclosure. We put in a few dollars, and we were able to turn it and flip it and bring, and bring it into our inventory as an affordable unit. And, and you can see, it, it does cost about $50,000 for us to do that, and that's your hard CPC funds at work, so.
Part of what they're there for.
Exactly.
All, or Karen, any, any questions for Anita?
I participated in the permitting of the Canterbury Street development. I frankly didn't find that all that satisfying with respect to the developer's contribution, looking in the rearview, but also at the time. 10 Cedar Street's interesting. It's got a lot of history to that site, as you well know. I'm kind of got mixed feelings when I hear what you're thinking about, but I'll hold my fire, keep, keep my tongue, so.
Is it something we should worry about?
No, not really. No. I just remember who was there, and...
I'm good, appreciate this.
This is, I like this, I like this kind of financial update. I, I think each page provides kind of a different picture. We're just so grateful for the work that you do, and, you know, again, as, as affordable housing has become very topical in Hingham in the last year because of developments, I think it's worth pointing out that we're one of a few communities in the Commonwealth that established an Affordable Housing Trust, and the purpose is to continue to provide affordable housing opportunities. And I really appreciate that you're looking across the town. I think the idea of looking at properties that have come into the town's possession is a great idea, and I also like the fact that as you're looking at housing, you're thinking of various types of housing with various needs, because they're all different kinds of needs across Hingham. And I think we've all said all along that, as Hingham gets to, to a point where our, we have met an uncontested 10%, as we like to say on this board, that doesn't mean we stop with affordable housing. It just means that we can do it more on our own terms. And, and that's, that's the very important work that you're doing, and I'd just add one last thing, which is that as you're working on these projects, one thing that we hear quite a bit is that there are a lot of people who want to stay in Hingham, who don't have housing options that are within their reach. And I think one of the great things that being at, being at an uncontested 10% is that it opens the door for more local preference. And I realize that DHCD sometimes says, "If you have more local preference, those units don't count," but I think that's a conversation that we should have. And I think of some of the properties you're developing and hope that we can, you know, have more of a local preference, because we have members of our community who, who worry about that. So, thank you so much for this update. Any other questions from the audience? Okay.
I just want to say thank you to this board. You've always been very supportive of the trust, as have a lot of boards. Zoning's been great with us, helping us out on a number of occasions, and for that matter, the town, the town at large. Hingham should be quite proud to be at 10%. You look at 350 communities across the state, and we are in the minority.
Thank you for your help.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thanks for your time. Have a good night.
You, too.
Okay, next on the agenda is appointing a Route 3A task force. Tom, did you want to cue this up, or did you want me to?
You can if you want to. It's, we, we had started, you guys had formed, or just voted to form this committee at the last meeting, and this is the opportunity to staff it with your hiring, in essence.
And the purpose, just as a, for benefit of the audience, the, the charge that this Route 3A task force will have will be to address the questions, concerns, liaising with other communities who have expressed concern over the mass DOT plan for addressing what we all agree is a pretty acute safety issue. So, in, in light of the Four River Bridge going down to one lane and things, we thought, for a variety of reasons, it would be deferring, deferring the road diet would be a good idea, and a big part of this task force is taking that time to address some of the concerns that were expressed by our neighboring communities. Okay, I'd, I'd open it up to my colleagues. We had, you know, initially talked about maybe a, a three-person task force. We could, we can take that up. I know we've also gotten some individuals who have expressed an interest, which, for which we're very grateful. So, I'd entertain motions for, for this task force.
All right, well, I guess I'll start off then. I think, first and foremost, I'd nominate or move that we appoint Deirdre Anderson to this effort, because I think that her efforts and her energy with respect to this issue is exemplary. And I think she brings the kind of dedication to getting this message out effectively to the communities, working with, you know, the town's engineer and the traffic engineer that we've brought in for this purpose, so that we can communicate this well and effectively to Towns Hall, Cohasset, and perhaps even to the city of Weymouth. So, I think that's...
Second? Okay, well, should we, do you want to do this one by one, or should we, or we vote in the whole body?
Well, okay, then I'd, I'd move on to, had a gentleman named Bryce Blair, who may be known to some of you, express an interest. I think his, his background with respect to development gives him an understanding that would make him well-suited to, you know, participate and contribute to this effort. I'd also nominate Alan Peralt. I've worked with Alan as a planner, and I've seen him in varying capacities here in town. I think he presents messages very effectively and in a manner that's conducive to understanding and acceptance. And then finally, I'd nominate Judith Sneeth, well-known to the town for her service on the planning board and numerous other committees. And I think that this would be a superb group of individuals and residents, well-suited for the sensitive and diplomatic task that lies before us, so.
Well, you took all my people, so.
Sorry.
So, I guess I got nothing.
You can second.
I, I will second, and I guess I'll just say, I think as a technical matter, you know, I, I agree with Paul. We ended up having a number of talent bank applications come in, really in the last several days. Certain of those folks were interested in the 3A task force, including Bryce Blair. So, it's caused us to bump up the number of folks included on the task force from three to four. So, when we formed it, I think a couple weeks ago, we may have specified a three-person committee. Because this is an advisory committee and not a, a committee that's going to vote, like, you know, the Conservation Commission, where you have to have a clear winner or clear approval, this is a committee that's going to build consensus and come back and report to the Board of Selectmen, so I'm not troubled by an even, even number in this group. So, I second the nominations put forth by, by Paul. And I guess, you know, we probably just need to amend that vote to be a, a four-person task force.
I would, I think, fully support everything that's been said. I, I think as well that because this 3A task force involves interfacing with other communities, I think this is a place where the Board of Selectmen liaison to this, to this task force will probably play a more active role. And I'm, I'm thrilled that that's Paul, because I think...
So am I.
I think it, it plays to your experience, and this will not be your first rodeo. So, in some ways, I see this group and I see you playing a, maybe a more significant role. So, I, I sort of view there being five individuals who are going to be participating. So, any, any questions or comments from the audience? Bill?
I'm a pig bee, or shall I? I'm Bill Reardon, Chairman of the Harbor Development Committee. I wanted to come to the meeting, both because I know you're doing appointments later on, and I wanted to be part of that, but also important that this task force, which in, in effect is stepping in, in some respects, to the place that the Harbor Development Committee has been, because it's been the only venue where this ongoing project of the Summer Street 3A corridor has been vetted, worked, had public hearings and that kind of thing. So, I just want to be clear about mission of the task force and your vision, particularly as it relates to how it might relate to, well, is there an ongoing role for Harbor Development or not? My own perspective is that Harbor Development will always want to know where the town is. We want to make sure left hand and right hand are working together here, because anything we do along the 3A corridor is going to impact what's going on in the harbor, and we want to, we want to make sure that we're coordinating. What I heard, and I just, that was the part that struck me, was that the mission of the committee, this, this new task force, is more focused on the liaison vis-à-vis our other towns. But the other important work that so far Harbor Development has been doing has been working with our engineer, creating a public forum for, for input, rolling out, you know, the, the initial plan possibility for the, for the pilot, which ultimately we deferred, turns out. I think that was a very good decision, given the Four River Bridge. So, just in terms of how, how do you all see this occurring? I, I had understood the task force was also obviously going to include our full-time professionals, Roger Fernandez, Mary Savage Dunham, perhaps Emily, because this is going to be now the focal point for continuing work with the engineers and moving, moving toward, further toward the 25% completion that we need to be part of the process and so forth. So, a little bit of clarity on that point for, for me, and I think perhaps for the town, would be useful.
Sure, thank you. And, and I think what you mentioned in terms of the public forum and continuing to advance that work to get to that 25% design would be the role of this task force. We would see, for example, that, and, and that town staff, so we would see police liaising with police in other communities, fire department engaging with the fire department, because this is going to, this is going to take everybody's efforts. You know, with, with respect to the coordination with the Harbor Development Committee, that is very important, because there are some dependencies there. And fortunately, I think Deirdre Anderson, as a member of the Harbor Development Committee, will be very well positioned to do that. I think one of the things that, that, one of the many factors that resulted in this task force being created was a recognition that this 3A piece in and of itself is a lot of work, and the Harbor Development Committee also has a lot of work that you want to do, particularly with respect to implementing the Warren Articles. And so, wanting to make sure that all of the important work down in that 3A and Harbor corridor gets completed. I don't know, Paul or Tom, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, I, I agree with what you say, and also adding to that, you notice that two of the individuals are interconnected with the work that's being done in the harbor, so it's, it's weaving together skill sets, interests, with the ultimate aim of trying to advance a project that, you know, is, is integral to the harbor itself, but, you know, we also have some external issues that we simply cannot ignore, can't afford not to address. And as Mary says, your work is broader than 3A. So, as the Bathing Beach Trustees, they, they have a project that they're going to be implementing. You know, before any of these projects are going to be ultimately successful, we'll figure a way, I would imagine, as the studies you're about to undertake, to the extent that they change or impact what we do, but essentially, we have to be able to successfully persuade our, our neighboring communities of the, the merits of what this is about. And that, that I think is going to require some out-of-town effort. We'll be using the resources that we have in town to kind of expand upon some of the issues that have been raised by the Town Hall in particular, as well as Cohasset. We'll deal with the public safety aspects with our own police and fire chiefs. So, I hope that answers your question. I'm kind of going around the circles a little bit, but...
So, just to be clear, it does, and thank you. I mean, I just, I just wanted to be clear, no ego involved here.
Yeah.
I mean, we were kind of a, a residuary, because when we passed the article in 2015 and had $400,000, well, women, who is going to kind of oversee this? And at the time, the Board of Selectmen chose to sort of park this with Harbor Development. Admittedly, it was always somewhat ancillary to what our primary mission is, and given the people you've got assigned, including Deirdre, who is a member of the Harbor Development Committee, Alan Peralt, former Chair, I mean, you know, this is a very well-qualified group, and I, it sounds like, you know, a group that can succeed in what you've described as a tough mission.
Thank you.
We've got some good people on that group, and I think that they're, having seen them in action over the decades that we've been doing this, I'm very comfortable that we're going to be successful.
Any other comments? Okay, so, I think there was a motion that was seconded to appoint Judy Sneeth, Deirdre Anderson, Bryce Blair, and Alan Peralt to the Route 3A task force.
You may want to amend the prior vote, like Karen suggested.
Okay, so why don't, why don't we do that first?
We expand the, the number of the 3A task force from three to four.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now the motion is on the table to appoint Judy Sneeth, Deirdre Anderson, Bryce Blair, and Alan Peralt to the 3A task force. It was moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a policy recommendation for special one-day liquor license application. I'm told we will not be taking a vote tonight.
But I can certainly update you as to where things stand quickly. So, Sharon Profetti, Chief Olson, and I have been talking about sort of augmenting the one-day liquor license application process and requirements. You know, from time to time, we take a look at what we're doing, what, what other communities are doing, what represents sort of... are doing, what represents sort of best practices in certain administrative areas, and, you know, this has been, is one of those things. So we are, we are talking about expanding the diligence that we undertake in granting the one-day liquor licenses. We're talking about, right now, on the one-day liquor license application, that asks folks to describe their event. Some people will describe the event by giving the name of the event, and some people will provide eight pages of detail into how the event's going to run. I'm not interested in creating an eight, eight-page application, but I am interested in making sure that the town understands exactly where the event's going to be located, what the parking flow is going to be, so that in particular, with respect to parking, the chief can evaluate whether a detail is necessary. We certainly want to know who's going to be serving the alcohol, and, and, you know, again, just understand how the event's going to run. So we will sort of build out the application around a couple, two or three additional bullet points to help folks understand what it is we need to make our responsible decision in granting a one-day liquor license. We're also considering requiring TIPS certification and, as well as liquor liability insurance. And we're, we're, you know, we're not looking to price these events out of the market by creating requirements that are going to make it, you know, enormously difficult for folks to have responsible events where they serve alcohol. On the other hand, you know, we need to protect the interests of the town and the folks at large when we're, you know, when we are the issuing authority for a one-day liquor permit. So we're almost there, I think. We've got, you know, maybe just another round, and, you know, we'll be back to you, I think, for a vote on a little bit of an expanded process. Right. Anything you want to say, Chief?
No, I just think it's a good process.
Chief, thanks.
I just think it's a good process, and it's mainly just to help make sure that these events go safely, that they're properly in areas that can support them. So I think whenever you're issuing a license to serve alcohol, it's something that we as a town have to sort of be careful about. And I think the, the TIPS certification is something that can be done online. I think it's a $40 fee.
It's $40.
It takes three hours to do. So it's just, just a way of ensuring that we have safer events and, and we have better control over it, so we're very close to getting there, I think.
Yeah, and I appreciate your time on this.
Thank you.
It, it seems kind of timely, too, especially, you know, as you think in the past few years, more venues have been built out where there are a lot of, where, that can hold a lot more of these events. And I'm, I'm often struck by the number of one-day liquor licenses that this board grants in a given year. So taking a look at our process, seeing how, what others are doing-
Right.
What can we do to make it better? I think that's something that we do ongoing with everything-
Absolutely.
And glad to see it here. Paul, any-
My reaction to that, though, Chief, is that, not trying to throw cold water on the idea, but if I've got to spend three hours, you know, taking some kind of online computer test, I, I guess I'm just a little uneasy that somebody may just say, you know, skip it, let's take a chance, and-
Well, they'd have to bring their certification in to us.
I'm just saying, skip the whole licensing altogether, but I don't know. I'll wait until what you've got rolls itself on.
We actually hire companies to do it for them.
Okay.
So if you hire, yeah.
If they had a vendor or a caterer, they might have all that stuff.
I see.
The only, you know, the, the place we're worried about are, you know, smaller events where nonprofit staff really undertake the serving of the alcohol, where there's no, if there's a caterer involved, my assumption would be, and I think we'd build this into our application form, that the caterers, bartenders, would be TIPS certified, and that the caterer themselves would carry liquor liability insurance. The translation of those requirements to the smaller events is kind of what we are, we're going to talk about over the next couple of weeks. You know, we did think that asking, asking somebody who's asking us for the ability to, for our permission to serve alcohol, that three hours and a, three hours to understand the responsible service of alcohol wasn't too much to ask in a $40 fee. But you're right, you know, people could cut corners. But that, that's the discussion point. The, the bigger events where they hire caterers-
That's an easy one.
That's an easy one, because I think that's already there. It's the smaller events where folks are kind of, are taking it upon themselves to serve alcohol.
Right.
Where they may walk away. On the, on the other hand, they're sort of the more dangerous, you know, or riskier propositions than, than the catered events.
I might make a suggestion, and we've got some good information here in our packet, and I know Karen has been working on this with Sharon Profetti and the Chief. Paul, maybe you and I can look through these materials that we've gotten, and in the next few days, forward any questions or comments to Sharon, who can then convey them to Karen and the Chief, and that way, as you're working to bring something back to the board, we've had an opportunity to provide some input.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Before we get into the annual board and committee appointments, which is our next item on the agenda, I just, I noticed that Mr. Orr is in the audience. I know we have a vote on the memorandum of agreement, and while you're very welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, perhaps we might take that up. Tom, could you just-
Sure. Sure, the only thing-
Headline?
Yep. So what we're actually, actually going to be taking up tonight is a First Amendment to the lease. The board signed a lease with Mr. Orr at the last meeting. It was a little preliminary in that the language required a couple of tweaks afterwards to bring some of the clauses more in line with the RFP, and to bring them back to some of the negotiated points that Mr. Orr and myself had come to. And so that's what's before you in the form of a First Amendment to the existing lease that you signed at the last meeting.
Yep. And Mr. Orr has read this-
He has.
The First Amendment and is-
Scouts on.
Comfortable.
Yes.
Hey, Tom wants to hear. You have one more ticket. Come on.
And counsel, counsel's taken a look at it as well.
Yes.
Okay. Karen or Paul, any, any questions about this lease amendment?
No, I've, I've had the opportunity to read it, to, to talk with Tom, and, you know, I understand the changes. I appreciate your patience in, in dealing with us and on all of this, and I'm, I'm prepared to vote.
Yep. Ditto, okay. Carol?
The changes involved, or were they related to?
So a lot of them are language changes. I could go over with you after the meeting, if you'd like, and give you a copy of the, of the First Amendment to the lease. Okay.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we vote to approve the-
First Amendment?
The First Amendment to lease with Richard Orr, DBA, J.F. Orr and Sons.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I just want to say thank you so much to the board and to Tom and everything. It's just been wonderful.
Thank you. We're glad.
Okay, Dave.
Okay. The next item on the, on the board's agenda is, are the annual board and, and committee appointments be-
I'm sorry, can I just talk to-
Please, Tom, is there one other?
I think Scott and Patty might be here to take up the approval of the regs. I don't know if you want to do that.
Oh, the Bear Cove?
I'm guessing that's why the two of them are here.
Sure, sure. Thank you for-
I don't know if you want to do it out of order or not, I'm just, just a suggestion.
No, I, my colleagues are okay with that?
Sure.
Yeah. Tom, could you-
Sure. So the regs are done. Really done this time.
We need to be like knocking on some wood or something, I feel like, right?
I know, believe me, I know, yes.
Right? So can you maybe kind of highlight what's happened in the last few weeks?
Sure. So at your last meeting, which was terrific for me, because it gave me the parameters we needed to, to lock down a lot of the rules and regulations and the, and the permitting procedures that we're going to follow, that's been done, incorporated into the final document before you. The implementation plan is extensive. We will be, we had talked at last, at the last meeting of rolling this out officially on July 15th. I'm requesting that you now do that on July 18th, which is Wednesday, excuse me, July 19th, which is Wednesday. That gives me the opportunity for two things. I didn't have all of the material, as I, as I warned, it may happen at the last meeting, until today. The final material finally came in today, so I'm still preparing the rollout of that, of that material to the public. More importantly than that, though, we have a situation where the entire online permitting or the entire permitting process is being done digitally, whether it's through the clerk's office or by the applicant online, depending on the stage you're at. And I feel it's important, when we roll this out initially and start implementing it to the public with regards to printing permits and dog tags and going through that whole process, that we have an, and some IT staff available to assist the clerk's staff when they're here. If we're doing that on a Saturday, it wouldn't work. They're not available. So by doing it, by doing the permitting itself, the permitting event itself on Tuesday, that's our long day. We're here until seven o'clock that night, gives the public an opportunity to come in after work, get their, get their permits by, on Tuesday evening, and then beginning Monday, Wednesday morning, when Bear Cove Park opens at dawn, I believe, right? Off they go. So.
And earlier this week, when Tom and Ted brought this to, to my attention, we talked about it, and it made sense to me that we want this rollout to be successful. We've all worked too hard for it to go another way. And I'm also conscious of perhaps, you know, bringing people in on a Saturday in the summer and having them work for several hours, and, you know, what if, what if 50 people come in for a permit? So I think the, the benefit of rolling it out on Tuesday and getting some experience during the week is we can see how many, what is the cadence, and how, how many people are we coming in to get permits, and does that suggest that we should do some sort of after-hours unique permitting? And should that be on a Saturday, or maybe should it be on a weeknight? It gives us some flexibility. Carol, I, I just want to thank you for putting that in the Hingham Journal. I did, after Ted and Tom and I talked on Tuesday, reached out to Carol, so those dates are, those dates are in the paper.
The only other thing I would add is tomorrow, after tonight's vote, didn't want to jump the gun on things, the final regulations and the final Bear Cove Park map on a new Bear Cove Park off-leash walking permit webpage on, through the town clerk's website, will all be rolled out in the morning, tomorrow morning, first thing. That will include online applications for residents and non-residents. If you care to get, I'll talk to the public now, if you care to get your online, or if you care to, care to get an off-leash walking permit, we ask that you can hop online and start that application process tomorrow or over the weekend online, so that when you come in on Tuesday during our permitting event with the clerk's office, the cards, the dog tags, et cetera, can all be preorganized for you. So everything is ready to go when you come before, so we don't, you know, and worst-case scenario, Tom, I like, you know, to plan for the, for the chance that we're going to have 2,000 people on Tuesday coming in to get a dog permit. It's possible. We have 4,000 dog licenses in town, so it's possible.
I, I didn't realize that was your nickname, but-
Well, I worry about these things, keeps me up at night. But that way, I think, we'll be prepared. If people can, can, can do this ahead of time, I think it'll, it'll expedite the process on Tuesday, and then be ready to flow on Wednesday smoother.
And I would just add that last night, Tom, Tom sent us all a link, and so I actually registered one of, one of my dogs, and, you know, I put in, I put in the, the dog tag number from the town clerk's office, and 80% of the information was populated for me. Phone number, all the information, when the license expires, the rabies. It was great, because, because as I was looking at the field, I'm thinking, I, I don't know when my dog tag expires, so, you know, I think an added benefit of having this automated is that for those of us who get dog licenses, you put the tag on the dog, you know it's good for a few years, but you forget. I think it'll have, it'll, it'll, it'll work things out, so it was, it was really very quick, and-
To that end, I can't thank Kate Richardson and IT and Steve Becker for allowing her time enough, I mean, she is a whiz. She had to write five online programs from scratch for this to work, so.
No, I, you know, this program, to me, just really demonstrates cooperation here in Town Hall. There were a number of departments and folks that had to come together to get this done. It was the cooperation of the Bear Cove Park Committee, the Share Bear Cove Group, you know, we, we came together, we got some instruction from Town Meeting, and I think in pretty rapid order have put together, you know, a program, so I appreciate all those efforts.
It's been great.
And I make one more plea, people, just be responsible. That's all we're asking, you know, it's, it's, we can write, we can write volumes, but if you're not going to take personal responsibility for your animal, it's just not going to work. So one more plea for that.
I happened to be in here yesterday, and somebody presented me with my own personal dog tag, so-
Number one.
Here I am. And if I ever have a dog, I, I do actually, I don't have a dog at the moment, but I have had him in the past. But nevertheless, I, I'd like to thank Tom for the work that you've done on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I love the number that I've got assigned to me, it's 1633 Bear Cove.
Nice.
It's, I'll save this.
Put it in front of your name tag. You have to wear it all the time.
Yeah, I know, I know. There I am.
There it is.
With my dog.
Whoever thought we'd be seeing that?
You know? You've got to have a sense of humor in this business.
I still want to know- So I, I thought the dog's name was Jaws, but no.
Doggy.
So, so I'd like to move that we ratify, what was the date of the meeting, our prior meeting?
June 27.
We ratify our vote of June 27th, and we amend that vote by indicating a July 19 implementation date.
Second.
So I move acceptance of the off-leash dog walking program rules and regulations.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Patty or Scott, if you would like a co, if you would like, if you-
We'll aut, we'll autograph for you if you'd like.
No, if, this will be posted tomorrow, but if, if, if you, if you're interested. Terrific.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so next we'll go to board and, board and committee appointments, and after that, we do still have some additional votes before Selectmen and Town Administrator reports. Just as, as a lead-in to what we're going to be doing tonight, this past year, every year, we put out a request for people to fill out talent bank applications for consideration to volunteer in, in some of the town boards and committees, and this year, the response was so overwhelming that we actually, along with the moderator, held seven evenings of interviews, and we interviewed usually about eight people in a given night. And it was really just, it was really affirming, it was overwhelming, to meet really talented people. Some have been in Hingham for a very long time, others new to Hingham. They all want to serve their town, and I think we all know that this town really does run on volunteerism, so we're just so extraordinarily grateful for that. The, the moderator has already made appointments for committees that are the moderator's responsibility. Tonight, we're going to start on some of our committees. We, we will probably not appoint all of the committee, all of the openings this evening, and the reason for that is with some of our boards and committees, we still don't have a lot of applicants. For example, I believe we have four openings on the Veterans Council, and we, we don't have four candidates who have stepped forward. Also, we will be making our appointments to the Foster School Building Committee at our next meeting on July 25th. And some of, depending on how those, those appointments are done, will, will shape some of our other things. We've, I think we probably had, Paul and Karen, 15 people come forward for seven positions on the Foster School Building Committee. So to the extent that individuals aren't appointed to that committee, we would perhaps be interested in seeing if they'd be one, being interested in serving on another committee. So tonight- So tonight, what I think we'll do, we've gotten some great materials from Sharon. I know we've all been working on this ourselves. As we go through these committees, I will accept motions to reappoint or appoint. And if anyone is interested in just holding on a committee appointment until our meeting on the 25th, if you could indicate that as well. I know for me, there are a few committees that I'd like to hold off on. So we'll start out with the Affordable Housing Trust, where we have two vacancies. Would either of my colleagues like to make a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion first, I think, to reappoint Tim White and Michael McDonald to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to fill one of the vacancies with an individual with banking experience, Elizabeth Von Pier.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we still have one opening on the Affordable Housing Trust. The Zoning Board of Appeals, we have associate members, and we have one member vacancy, starting with the reappointment.
Do you want to do that one, Paul? You want me to?
Sure. I'll move to reappoint Al Kearney, James Blakely, Mario Romani, and Michael McCurio as associate members of the ZVA.
And should we add Joe Freeman?
And Joe Freeman as well.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Would anyone want to, do we want to make an appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, or would we want to hold off on that until?
Hold.
Would you like to hold?
Hold.
Okay, we'll be holding on that one. Okay, the Bear Cove Park Committee.
I move that we reappoint Susan Keynes and Rickard Johnson to the Bear Cove Park Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to appoint Frances Rocket to the Bear Cove Park Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Claudia Eaton to the Bear Cove Park Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One of the things that we talked about as part of the Bear Cove Park Committee is that they will be so instrumental in working to help implement and monitor the leashing program that we've all worked so very hard on. And we appreciate the members of the Bear Cove Park Committee who have served on the committee, and we also appreciate those who have stepped forward to join the committee.
You know, and one thing I'd like to say in that regard is, you know, when we talked with folks who came forward to be interviewed, to be considered for membership on the Bear Cove Park Committee, one of the things that all three of us talked with them about was the important role of stewardship for the entire park. So I think it's going to be important to keep in mind going forward that the off-leash dog walking program is one passive recreational use that takes place in that park, and there are a number of other tasks and responsibilities that signing up to be a member of the Bear Cove Park Committee, you know, means that you're willing to undertake. And I just want the public to know that when we vetted these candidates, that was the message that came across.
Thank you. Next is the Beautification...
So we will still have some vacancies on that committee?
Correct.
Okay.
Next is the Beautification Committee.
So I actually did talk to Laura Spaziani, who's the current chair of the Beautification Committee. And aside for the fact that she gave me a little bit of a hard time about being so formalistic about the Beautification Committee, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Suzanne Hardin, Carol Alinsky, Diane Morrison.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to move that we appoint Jenny Sullivan and Patricia Collins to the Beautification Committee.
Jenny?
Sullivan.
Sullivan.
And Patricia Collins.
Patricia Collins.
And that was in consultation with the chair.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Cable TV Advisory Committee. We right now have six members of the Cable TV Advisory Committee, and we have one individual who's seeking reappointment. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we reappoint John Rice to the Cable TV Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I went back and looked in the Cable TV Committee kind of bylaws, and unlike just about every other committee in the town, their membership is flexible. It's five to seven members.
Oh.
And one of the things that, I spoke to Laura Burns before tonight's meeting, but we didn't catch up until about 6:00. What I would like to do, if my colleagues are inclined, is I'd like to reach out to the chair of the Cable Advisory Committee to see, to get some thoughts on adding a seventh member to that committee, which is permitted under their bylaws. I think we had a number of people during the interview process who had expressed an interest and who might bring some helpful skills, as H-CAM not only works towards renegotiating contracts, but also as they move...
Re-envision their...
And re-envision themselves.
So the school rep doesn't count as a member?
The school rep does not count as a member.
All right. I'm all for that.
So what I'll do is, I'll take that as my to-do before the 25th, but I would like to consult with the chair of the Cable Advisory Committee. Community Preservation Committee. I don't know if either of you have a candidate or would like to hold on that one.
My preference is to hold, but if Paul has a candidate, I'm happy to consider.
I'll join.
Yep. Conservation Commission. We have two members who are eligible for reappointment.
I make a motion to reappoint Robert Mosher and Henry Hiddell to the Conservation Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have three openings on the Conservation Commission. I was going to put a hold on that until our next meeting. Again, we still have some candidates with interest in a number of things, and I sort of want to see how they, particularly the school building committee appointments settle out.
Yeah, and, you know, I think this is an important committee to have some stability on. I think it's going to be important to really assess the commitment of folks to want to join that effort.
Yep. So... Constable.
I mean, it's not really a town meeting unless you reappoint Catherine Peliquin to be the constable, so I make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The Council on Aging, we'll start with reappointments.
I make a motion to reappoint Deborah Hoffman to the Council on Aging.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to reappoint Gail Ferring to the Council on Aging.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I missed Gail.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chrissy Roberts to the Council on Aging.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I make a motion to appoint Rebecca Moffett to the Council on Aging.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to appoint Lisa Comans to the Council on Aging.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Country Club Management Committee, start with reappointments.
I move that we reappoint William Friend and Roderick Gaskell to the Country Club Management Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'd make a motion that we vote to appoint Sue Sullivan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Cultural Council, this one, and I appreciate the note that we got from Chair Sucecki that there is a five-member minimum to be eligible for grants, and that grant window is closing, so important to make these appointments.
I move that we vote to reappoint Janine Sucecki.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we appoint Tricia Burns to the Cultural Council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and so that gets us to four members. So I would perhaps ask again, with that fifth-member requirement, if we could perhaps each take it upon ourselves to try to come back to our next meeting with at least one candidate, so that we don't miss out on those grant opportunities. Development and Industrial Committee, we have one member who has just concluded six years of service. So as of right now, we have two vacancies on the DNIC, notwithstanding Sue Sullivan. Would anyone like to make a motion to appoint to the Development Industrial Commission?
So, sir, clarification, though. We don't have any reappointment?
No reappointment.
Okay, and we've reached out to that person cycling off?
It's been a six, it's been six years. It's a five-year...
Oh, okay.
It's a five-year, right. It's a five-year, but actually, the appointment that expired, that individual's just completed six years.
Okay. And so for that one, it's typical that people serve two terms. This one is five and completed.
Correct. And in this case, it's six years.
Six years.
So, yeah.
I'd move to appoint Michael Cranley.
I'll second that.
Second. I mean, third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I am going to come back to that on the 25th.
Okay.
Unless, do you have?
No, I'd like to think about that, too.
Okay. We are, as I mentioned, we will hold off on the Foster School Building Committee. The school committee will be making its appointments on Monday. G.A.R. Hall Trustees.
I'd move to appoint Bob Beal to this position. I realize he's served two terms there, but I think the service he provides to the town is exemplary and well worth keeping him in that spot.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Harbor Development Committee, we have appointments, and we have one open seat.
I move that we reappoint Brian Neese and Tom Covany to the Harbor Development Committee.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I might ask that we hold off on the Harbor Development appointment? Until our meeting on the 25th? Okay. Historic Districts Commission, we have an at-large appointment that has been an at-large appointment.
I would move that we appoint Victoria Madden to the Historic Districts Commission.
I think it's Veronica?
I mean, Veronica. Veronica Madden to the Historic Districts Commission.
I'll second that.
For the at-large seat.
Any discussion?
Barry Cabal is hoping to put her in another spot, but, you know, I'll defer.
Okay.
Certainly would be a significant contribution, no matter where she sat.
Okay, I agree with that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to suggest that the Historical Society rep position and the, that we hold off on the other Historic District appointments until we get some information and clarification.
Right, there's a process dictated by our bylaw that we need to make sure that we're fulfilling for those. I wonder, though, is Thomas Kindler, the alternate Historical Society rep is up for reappointment, I believe? And I would assume we could reappoint him.
Yes, and I...
I'd like to do that.
I believe, actually, we just got word today that Mr. Kindler is interested.
So I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint, as the Historical Society Associate Member, Thomas Kindler.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for catching that, Karen. On the Historical Commission, we have three members rolling off. If my colleagues are inclined, I'd like to hold on that until the 25th, because I think there are some candidates for this in school building. Thank you. Hingham Public Library Trustees, we have one selectmen appointment, reappointment.
I'd like to move to appoint Elizabeth Eldridge.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lincoln Apartments Board of Managers, we have one reappointment.
I move that we reappoint Greg Dobel to the Lincoln Apartments Board of Managers.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Massport Community Advisory Committee. Wait of my colleagues.
I don't have anyone for that at the moment.
Okay. We'll hold off on that one until the 25th. Paul, you have to make the motion on this one, because it's Bells.
Okay. I'll move that we reappoint the following individuals to a second term. Kenneth Drescher, Joan Gieto, Martha Ryan, Ian Schillen, Michael Schillen, and Dorcas Wagner. With thanks, the music is beautiful on Tuesday nights.
So even though I don't get the inside joke, I will second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Healy likes the bells in town.
I do.
He's quite an enthusiastic supporter of the CPC projects for the bells.
Yes. Music is good.
Okay, Paul.
Registerer of Voters, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Don Civer.
Second.
Aye.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have a vacancy for a...
I'll move to appoint Al Chambers, Republican Register.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The Scholarship Fund Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Adam White.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to suggest that we hold off on Traffic and Safety Committee until the 25th.
Fine.
And then the last one is the Veterans Council.
I make a motion that we reappoint John Buckley and Jack Rayburn to the Veterans Council.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we vote to appoint Joseph Sweeney, Veterans Council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One other?
Yeah, you have another?
In case I can't find the guy. Just give me a minute, if you would. I remember this Ted yesterday. I make a motion that we vote to appoint Bruce Macaloney to the Veterans Council.
I'd like to hold on that. I'd like to hold on that.
Okay.
Hold it is.
Let me just, I can't find my notes, but let me, let's talk. Let's hold.
I had potentially thought about him for a different committee. So, all right, we'll hold on that. Any other appointments? I think this document is very helpful, but did I miss any?
I don't think so.
So that concludes the appointments for this evening. We'll give this information, and Tom, if it's possible for Sharon to update this document in advance of the next meeting, it would be my hope that... It would, it would be my hope that we could complete as many of the outstanding appointments on the 25th as, as possible, but I do understand that we may not necessarily have candidates for all of the different positions. Okay, we have some additional votes to be made. Just looking at the vote list, I'd take a motion to appoint John Norris as a Special Police Officer for the Town of Hingham for a term effective August 2nd, 2017 through April 30th, 2018.
Second. Or so moved.
I would just like to say that I had the pleasure of working with John as a young patrolman and later as a sergeant, and I've always enjoyed John as a thoroughly professional and pleasant individual, credit to the uniform that he wears. It's kind of bittersweet to see him coming to this point because he's, this is a signal that he's retiring from, from service to the town, so John and Charlene, I wish you both well in your retirement, and I look forward to seeing you out there doing details from time to time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Karen, how about if you take the one-day liquor license?
Everybody's got their specialty, pause the bells, I got the liquor booze. I would like to move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage license to Kristen Leif on behalf of Father Bill's in Mainspring for Food Fest 2017 to be held at the launch at the Hingham Shipyard on Saturday, June 25th from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m.
July 25th?
I mean, July 25th, 2017.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I move that we issue a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Matt Snyder on behalf of Hingham Beer Works for Food Fest 2017 to be held at the launch at Hingham Shipyard on Saturday, July 25th, 2017 from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Check.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Take the next one?
I move to approve the request of the Hingham Downtown Association to use the sidewalks for the annual summer sidewalk sales on July 27th, 28th, and 29th, 2017.
Second, and I, I know the chief, you're, you're all good with this, right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tom, I think the next couple, Liberty Chevrolet, Minuteman Trucks, and Turf Products, we've gotten the information already, but could you perhaps just give the headlines of these three requests from Randy?
Sure, so these are before you because they're outside of the, of the allocation levels that the town administrator can sign for contracts. They're all over $50,000. The first is a dump truck that DPW Superintendent is purchasing. It has been procured through the Plymouth County bid process, and that is a total price of $57,143.08. The second is a dump truck, also procured by the DPW Superintendent, also procured, I believe, through the. What was this?
I think it was the MAPC.
MAPC. Okay.
That is one serious dump truck, man.
Yeah, this is, this is a big truck. Total price, $169,639. And the last is a Groundmaster 4010D mower. Total price on this piece of equipment came to $76,422.43.
And all three of these items were approved as part of the FY18 capital plan that town meeting approved?
Yes.
And the bids are all, came in within the amount.
So they weren't bids, they were, they were purchased off of the state bid list, off the state contract list.
So the amounts line up?
Yes, yes.
So this is part of the capital allocation to the, to the DPW?
Right, they're starting to purchase. Any, any questions from my colleagues?
I just have to say, that must be one heck of a lawnmower. Yes, it is. Seriously, I mean, does this do like fields, like two swings and the field's done, or?
I don't think it's two swings.
Three, maybe three.
Oh, okay. It is a heavy-duty mower, yes.
Just checking.
Any questions? Questions from the audience? Okay. Karen, do you want to maybe make a motion?
Sure. I vote that we approve the agreement with Liberty Chevrolet for the 2017 Chevrolet 3,500 one-ton dump truck.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we vote to sign the agreement with Minuteman Trucks, Inc. for a 2018 International Harvester 7,400 dump truck.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we sign the agreement with Turf Products Corp. for a Groundmaster 410D mower.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm just going to jump down to the next two votes and then Tom, I'll ask you maybe just to walk us through the regulatory agreement, but I'll take a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary entertainment license to Capital One Cafe for Open Mic Night to be held on Monday, July 24th, 2017 through Friday, July 28th, 2017 from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
All right, can I ask a dumb question? What is an entertainment license? Is it? Different than?
It generally allows a place of business to have some type of entertainment, which could be music. In this situation here, they're actually inviting, they have a cafe along with their bank, they're inviting local musicians, poets, or whatever, to come and sort of display their wares and voices and musical things.
And there's no alcohol at this?
There's no alcohol served there. The reason I ask for a temporary one on this is because that's a unique zoning issue up there that I thought that needed to go in front of the different boards before anything is permanently issued for that type of situation.
Okay.
And most entertainment licenses, too, at any point in time, the selectmen always have the option of revoking it if something goes wrong. It's not a.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept a gift from RSL Realty LLC consisting of 17 granite slabs remaining from the foundation of the original Lincoln Building located at 51 to 55 South Street.
I'll second that with pleasure, and Mr. Levine, ordinarily, I don't leave work in the middle of the day to attend groundbreaking ceremonies, but in this case, I made an exception for you because I found your donation to the town a very generous gift with deep meaning. Ladies and gentlemen, what I'm referring to is the, the Lincoln Building as it existed in the square for over 100 years was, among other things, built using large granite slabs, and they lay in the hole after the building was taken down, after it fell down. And Mr. Levine, am I pronouncing the name right there? Levy? Generously donated these to us where the Highway Department came, picked them up, and they're now over at the Highway Department for use at some time in the future with respect to public hardscape that may be contemplated. So a piece of the town's history is preserved, it stays in the town, you know, I'm sure that anybody who, who sees these will, will be struck by just their unusual and that you don't see this in modern construction. So thank you, sir, very much, and best of luck to your construction efforts down in the square, looking forward to seeing that built.
Echo, echo my thanks, it was very generous. So Paul's made the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tom, we have the regulatory agreement between the town and the Weathervein at Chestnut Gardens.
Sure, so just to introduce that, this is an old project, this was originally permitted back in the early 2000s, I believe. I was told this preceded Paul's time, I mean, excuse me, well, Paul's time, but Ted's time in, in his, his role.
Nothing precedes Paul's time.
That's right, it certainly did not precede that. It is a regulatory agreement, a local initiative program, regulatory agreement between the town and DHCD for some affordable units being constructed at a project called Weathervein over at Chestnut Gardens. It was approved under the town's flexible residential development bylaw, contains two affordable units. The form that you have is a form provided by, by the DHCD and has been approved by them. Emily Wentworth and our real estate counsel, Susan Murphy, have, have reviewed and approved it.
Questions from my colleagues?
So it's a lip, which means we can give local preference, is that?
No, on that one, I, I, you know, it's a good question that I'd have to ask.
I don't think those two necessarily go hand in hand.
Okay, it just says local initiative program.
Yeah.
No, okay. Would be nice, is all I'm saying?
Yeah, it would.
And Susan Murphy's reviewed it and she's okay with it?
Yes.
My recollection of these things is they're pretty formulaic, anyway.
Yeah, you know, I was involved in the permitting of this project. This was a former Riley family homestead, and later, that's where John stored his equipment. And it's, it's interesting that it's an FRD because I remember when Susan Murphy was on the planning board, she wrote the FRD, which was later voted on and approved by town meeting. This has gone through some different permutations in terms of, it started out as, you know, 55, and I, I think that that's, it's changed somewhat, but it's, it's good to see this coming along, it's good to see the project going to completion. Like you said, it's formulaic in nature, so.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. It moved that the board approve and execute the regulatory agreement between the town, 137 Beale Street LLC and DHCD for the affordable units to be constructed at the project known as Weathervein at Chestnut Gardens.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we get to Selectman and Administrator Reports, Tom, did I, I think we got all the votes that were on the list.
Yeah, with the exception of the ones that we postponed.
Okay, terrific. Town Administrator Report?
Sure. Okay, we have several things to review this, this week. The Lincoln Building, as you all know, this has been, the work has begun, the sidewalk has been closed per your, per your approval at your last meeting to enable the construction to begin on the foundation at the Lincoln Building. No issues to report, we just want to make sure that, to remind the public that despite the closure of that sidewalk, downtown businesses are open for business, and, and we encourage everyone to, to support them as best they can during this difficult, sometimes difficult time with the parking, so the extra effort would be great. Okay, the Tree and Park Building, this is the building at 8 Short Street. We have concluded, as you saw tonight, negotiations on a three-year lease. And that's all been signed, so, so that project is now behind us. Alliance Residential, if you don't mind, I'm going to read this one, I don't want it to sound routine, but I'd like it to be official, and I don't want to summarize where I shouldn't summarize. So the Zoning Board of Appeals permitted 220 residential units for this development and filed the permit with conditions forwarded to you separately with the town clerk on 6/19/17. We have received formal notification that the permit has been appealed by Beals Cove Condominium Trust. The filing of the permit with the town clerk begins a one-year safe harbor in addition to the town's existing position that has already reached the 10% threshold. During the safe harbor, the zoning board has the discretion to impose any condition on or even deny a new 40B project without the ability of the developer to appeal. The safe harbor will end in one year from the issuance of the ZBA permit on 6/18/18 if a building permit is not issued for the project by that date. An appeal of the ZBA decision is the type of delay that would cause the issuance of a building permit on a project of this type to extend past one year. We are monitoring the situation, will advise the board as the events unfold.
Carol, I will give you this, what, what Tom just read, I will give you that at the end of the meeting. I noticed that, but I just thought that you, I knew you might want that as follow-up.
Great, so the former Municipal Light Building, as you know, we have issued an RFP for that project, or for that property, and, and an attempt to find a lessor, and we are, let's see, lessor, let's see. And we are working on that. We've received two bids and we will be evaluating them this coming week. We hope to have an answer for you, or something for you on the 25th.
Thank you.
That's the goal. Powers Field Playground, the, Ted, Ted has been working on this, so I'm going to kind of read what he's got here, I don't want to summarize and miss something. As the board is aware, this playground was shut down in May of 17 when we received a report of the inadequate conditions of the, from the Rec Department. Since the shutdown, we have received numerous calls from neighbors that wish to see it reopened, and that effort has, and those calls have, have resulted in an effort that raised nearly 20, $12,000 for the replacement of the playground equipment by that neighborhood. We met with the neighbors of Powers Field on Wednesday evening to, to detail the replacement plans and gain their input, those designs have been received this afternoon, and we are moving forward with those plans. So that will be a discussion between the town and the neighborhood to determine the, the equipment options and see what, what everybody wants out there, and what, and what funds have been raised, and what's available, and what we can do.
So, so the designs have gone out?
The designs have been received this afternoon.
Here?
Yes.
And then, so we need to forward those on?
I believe, I believe he sent them out to the, to all the residents of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
If, if he didn't today, it will be done tomorrow, I believe he did today.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay, the next one, this is, the Army Corps of Engineers is doing a, some site investigations at Bear Cove Park this summer, late summer, early fall. The Corps is, I'm going to read this initial part because it's kind of formal, but I'll explain what they're doing in layman's terms in a moment. The Army Corps intends to initiate an investigation of the areas within the former naval, Hingham Naval Ammunitions, Ammunitions Depot and surrounding areas, including the Weymouth Back River, Riverbed, to evaluate soil samples, excavate and remove ordinance and explosive waste pollutants, and perform any other such work that may be necessary and incident to the government's use. So as we all know, the government used that, that property heavily during the World War, during the 40s, and it was an ammunitions depot, there is some concern that some ammunition may have been buried both in the, underwater and under the ground along the banks there, and over the years, it could have been releasing pollutants into the, into the soils or into the water. The government, through the Army Corps of Engineers, is coming out to run transects in, in specific areas and sites in the park to determine the, the environmental and/or public safety concerns that may exist. They are coming out to do a public meeting on this on August 2nd at 7:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. It will be hosted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, not by the town, it will be posted in the Hingham Journal and the Patriot Ledger. We will be holding some planning meetings internally on the 1st for, for staff, and public safety, the public safety team will have a meeting on the 2nd as well prior to the public meeting that evening, so.
So, so would it be at that point, I mean, are we, are we concerned at all that areas of the park may need to be closed off during this?
They will be, they definitely will be closed off, need to be closed off, different areas at different times. We don't know when and, and the extent of the closures yet, that will come in the next planning session, and will be evaluated and expanded on by the public safety team at the time.
And whether they need a police detail, or?
All of that, yep, yep, and, and there's hazardous materials, concerns, there's dozens and dozens of concerns that, that the Army Corps, the State DEP, the, the Hingham PD, Hingham Fire, Harbor Master, DPW, and on and on. So there's a lot of conservation, there are a lot of people, stakeholders that have been involved in the planning to date, and now we're getting to the point where we're going to start to have some, some information for the public, and we want to make sure we roll this out well in advance of any effort that's made in the fall. We should have public material, I've asked for it no later than the 15th, which is, of course, is a Saturday, so I'm guessing I'll leave a harbor tomorrow or Monday as soon as I get it, I'll make it available to the public over on our website.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul?
Yeah, a couple things. Received an email from the Public Affairs Officer from the Veteran Service Office today about the Blue Star families, and I would just urge and encourage anyone that's got a family member in service, if they haven't already received a flag from the town, please contact the Veteran Service Office so that we can make sure that you get one. There's a fund that was established through the generous donations of the citizens of this town to provide for that for all of our residents who wear the uniform in this country in service to it, so, you know, we try to get everybody that's involved, but, you know, unless we know who they are, we can't appropriately recognize them. And lastly, I'd like to thank the residents for supporting the repair and the restoration of the town clocks. That work has started at New North Church, Russ and Dave Hogstrasser, who are craftsmen in their own rights, they're brothers, and they have different clock shops, and I use Dave, but Russ is pretty good, too. They're starting to work on the clocks, and this Saturday, in the morning, they're going to be taking the hands down from the outside of the New North Church, and it's got a clock, functioning clock on all four sides of the steeple, so I know I'm going to be down there, so I'd invite anybody that's inclined, there's a police detail to there, chief?
Keep your head.
It's all good, I'll be taking pictures from the business.
Clocks, bells, anything up in a tower, anything up in a tower.
I was going to make the Blue Star family announcement as well, it's just, you know, I'm always proud to be in this town, but when you open up the email and you see the number of families whose sons and daughters are in service to this country, it's just, it's a little overwhelming, so I urge you, along with Paul, to reach out to us because we want to make you part of that larger family that we can keep in our prayers and thoughts and we can recognize. The other word of thanks would be for all the folks that came through the Talent Bank process, a thank you to Sharon Profetti for really running a professional and efficient process, we worked with the moderator and members of the school committee to evaluate dozens and dozens of candidates, and, you know, it was just striking the diversity of talent and the quality of candidates who are coming forward because they believe in this town, and that makes us who we are, and I appreciate each and every one of you for coming forward.
I concur.
I would just add, yesterday was the formal groundbreaking for the Lincoln Building, but that work has begun, and I would just echo the Town Administrator's thoughts, which are that downtown is open for business, and a lot of those, a lot of those shop owners or people who work in the downtown business district are friends and neighbors, and so let's, you know, let's remember to support them. And I'll just close by saying that our next meeting will be on Tuesday, July 25th. This board is really, will on a regular basis be meeting on Tuesday during the summer months, like many of you, we also take vacations and have family commitments, so we will meet on an occasional Thursday, but we'll be ready to go on Tuesday, Tuesday, July 25th. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you.